I'd like to call the Danville City Commission meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May the 28th. The time is 5:31. We do have a quorum. We want to keep the mayor in our thoughts as he is in New York City today watching his daughter, one of his daughters, perform at Carnegie Hall for a special honor for him tonight. We're going to be led in a word of prayer by Commissioner Siri. And we're going to be led in the place of allegiance this afternoon by the entire commission in honor of Memorial Day. Commissioner Siri.
We just passed something that's near and dear to a lot of us, and that's Memorial Day. A lot of folks have died in fighting for the freedom of this country. And so I would prefer just to take a moment of silence to remember those folks that have fought and died for us and their families that may or may not still be living. And let's do that rather than prayer, if you don't mind. And I would say amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Let me give this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Cottle wants the key to the city, so we'll give it to you during the executive session tonight. I'd like to ask the commission to review the agenda, and if it meets your pleasure, we will approve the agenda as presented. Thank you. At this point, we come to the public section of our meeting. And this here, the public, is that you are allowed to speak on any item on the agenda. We'll give you up to three minutes, and I'd like to ask if you come to speak, to please recognize yourself by telling us your name. Does anyone from here, the public, to speak on an agenda item? Yes, sir.
Yes, I was expecting the first part of it to be on the agenda. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Honorable City Commissioners.
You say you expect it to be on the agenda?
Well, I thought the first part was to be on the agenda, and then the hearing of the others would be at the last of the meeting. That was my, according to the agenda here.
Yeah, this is part of the, here, the public, to speak on items that are on the agenda.
Okay.
All right.
Then it's not my turn yet, is it?
Okay. I don't know. I don't know your topic.
Then I shall retire.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present who would like to speak on an item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's move on then. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation in honor of National Garden Week, and Commissioner Terry is going to read that for us. And if there's anyone present to accept this proclamation, we'd like to ask them to come forward.
Okay. I'm going to read it, and then I'll bring it to you.
Thanks.
This is a proclamation of the National Garden Week, June 2nd through the 8th, 2019. Whereas gardeners have a passion for nurturing the beauty and resources of the earth through the planting of seeds, the care of all plants, and the riches of their efforts. Whereas gardeners seek to add beauty, splendor, fragrance, and nutrition to our lives through the growing of herbs, vegetables, foliage, and flowers. Whereas gardeners work to preserve our country's traditional spirit of independence and initiative through innovation and hard work. Whereas gardeners advocate the importance of all creatures, large and small, that share our world and their roles in a balanced and productive ecology. Whereas gardening furnishes challenging and productive activity for our citizens, for those just learning as well as those having years of experience. Whereas gardening promotes a healthy lifestyle that lasts a lifetime, helps reduce stress from other areas of our life, teaches that rewards can come from diligent efforts. And whereas gardening enables members of garden clubs across the nation and the world to serve others in the communities where they reside and work. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Pro Tem, J. H. Atkins, and City of Danville, Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledge the importance of gardening and the numerous contributions of the Garden Club of Danville, and designate the week of June 2nd through the 8th, 2019, as National Garden Week, urging the citizens of Danville to participate in activities supporting this effort.
Chair would entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the proclamation into the record.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we kind of do, yeah. Is there someone? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Pam Linehour, President of the Garden Club of Danville, and I would just like to say two things. One is that next week, in commemoration of National Garden Week, we will be taking arrangements of flowers around to businesses and some community offices. I think one might even coming here. So there's that. And secondly, on May 18th, the Garden Club had a wonderful garden tour of eight gardens in the community. I see some smiling faces, so hopefully some of you attended. And I want to, in public, thank everyone for supporting it. It was very successful, and it enables us to give back to the community through our grant program where we fund various projects in the community. And so thank you so much.
The next item on our agenda is the Leadership Boyle County Class Recognition. The citation will be read by Commissioner Cottle.
I think I'm going to go down there and just call your name when she comes up, if you don't mind. And if I mispronounce your name, you just have to change your name for this. This year's class consists of Brittany Adams. Jeff Jewell. Patton Mahler. Nobody? All right. Susan Matherley. Not here. Julie.
Jamie Payton.
Oh. She's the only other one here. All right. Jamie Payton.
What's that? Cut out all the names.
Read the rest of the names.
Yeah, read the rest of the names.
I will. Yeah. Those not in attendance are Julie McAllister, Katie Nihouse, Dalton Sutherland, Nicole Sparks, Nate Stewart, Lena Tate, and Blake Thompson. And if I could, I'll read this proclamation. As graduates of Leadership Boyle County, an outstanding educational program that develops high-caliber citizens who are well-informed about the quality of life and the infrastructure of their communities, Leadership Boyle County is a vital link in promoting the overall success of the communities within this fine city. Therefore, Mayor Pro Tem, J. H. Atkins, and the Board of Commissioners of the City of Danville are honored to commend each of you for your participation in Leadership Boyle County and congratulate you on your graduation from this noteworthy program. Furthermore, we extend best wishes for continued success and good fortune to each of you.
Congratulations, Joel.
Thank you. If anybody wants to say anything.
Brian does.
If you don't know anything about the program, it's a great program.
Can you use the microphone here?
I moved to Danville about two and a half years ago. I work at Center College, and it was a great way to experience a community, everything you can imagine, some hard things to learn about what's happening in the community, and certainly great things. But I don't know why he picked me to talk, because he's in charge. And I have to say, you know, not only is it run by the chamber, but I got to do it this year just strictly as a participant. David Phelps, if you guys know him from Inter County, did a great job of running it and taking me a little out of the loop, so I could see what it's like to actually be a participant in the program. And it's awesome. If you've not done Leadership Boyle County, I highly recommend it. It's a kind of a big commitment. It's a year-long commitment, but I learned so much about our community, and I've got to tell you, coming out the other end of it, too, you realize what a really special place we all live in. Thanks.
Thank you. We were reminiscing Commissioner Cottle and I before the meeting started. I'm a graduate of Leadership Danville, and Commissioner Cottle is a graduate of Leadership Mercer County, back when Danville was a part of Mercer County. It's been that long ago since Commissioner Cottle participated.
Participated, right? So.
I can't bring the talk back.
Well, you know, that's real news, remember?
Leadership Danville as well.
Very rewarding experience, though. The next item is approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. So Chair would entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make that motion, but I would like to ask for a little help here. I think we have an omission. There's a lot of dialogue about our banners with Brass Band. I think we also talked about putting up the former Bill Pollam Run that a Danville High School is doing, and that did not make the minutes. And if I'm correct on that, if I could make that addendum.
An amendment?
Yeah. Do you all remember that?
Remember being brought up, but I don't remember the.
I thought we voted on both of them. So I could be incorrect, but I'm just asking the question. And if not, we can do that maybe today as an addition to our agenda, because it was presented to us, if I remember right. Is that right?
And it's scheduled for Father's Day weekend?
That particular run is right after Brass Band. So that banner would go up next Monday, and we'd share space in front of City Hall for at least one week. So.
We did talk about that in my discussion of that last meeting in terms of having both banners up. I may not have formally presented the approval of that Bill Pollam race, but it was noted that typically we do include that, and that a request was pending on that. So it would expedite matters if you simply amended the minutes to so approve.
Okey-dokey. Do you make that motion?
I do, yeah, with that addition. If you all remember as well as I did, we had a discussion about it. I think we voted on both.
Can we get a second to accept that friendly amendment? Okay.
He seconded.
Cottle seconded.
Commissioner Cottle, then? All right. And can we vote on the amended amendment? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Siri.
And Commissioner Atkins, since we're doing some housekeeping matters, I think we need a motion to approve or accept the recognition into the record, please, for item number two.
So move.
Second. Okay, you got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. So the next item is the introduction of a new coach enforcement officer.
Good evening. I just wanted you all to have a face and a name. This is Nina Wesley. You hired her at the last commission meeting, so we've kept her really, really busy. But we're really excited to have Nina with us, and just wanted you to have a face to go with the name.
Could she get up there so we could grill her for like 15 minutes or so?
Sure, come on up.
No. How do you like it so far?
I love it, and I am grateful for this opportunity to serve this community in this great city, and it's an honor to be here.
Well, we're glad to have you. Not everybody gets cut out for that job, so I'm glad you're taking it on.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And welcome aboard.
It's Nina, not Nina.
What's that?
I said it's Nina, not Nina.
Oh.
Nina, okay. I have to remember that.
The next item is the Strong Family Initiative, being presented by the Housing Authority. Tim Kites? I don't see Tim.
What, Housing Authority?
I guess we can skip out or table that and see if he arrives later on in the meeting. Item number six is a tourism appointment. You have a recommendation in your packet. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the recommendation.
I move to accept the recommendation of Alex McCroskey being appointed to the Tourism Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Alex, we're glad to have you. Alex served on Parks and Rec Board, and I know you all read that in his resume and so forth. So he's been involved in our community since he planted his feet here, following the way from Mississippi. We appreciate that.
Next item calls for a trails update.
Jennifer may do most of the presentation. I'm Mark Morgan, and I've been helping Jennifer on this initiative for probably six years. And we're really proud to come before you tonight to give you an update. This will be a little bit different. It's something that's really celebratory, and we can present actually things that have been accomplished as well as things that are being discussed. This afternoon, Mr. Coffey was good enough to take Jennifer and I out to show one part of the trail. There you'll see some photos. That'll go from Stamford Road over to the Henson Park, or what some people call the pond on Main. And it's incredibly beautiful, as you'll see. It's going to be, it was a hot day, and it's going to be shaded. There was definite effort to make it ADA compliant as much as is required, but also out of consideration for safety. But it still has some challenges to it. So you want to take over from there, or do you want me to?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we just have some slides, and Earl, please jump in if you have something to add. This is just, the slides that are going to follow are just construction sites that are either open now or will be opening soon. So we thought we would just go through, tell you a little bit about the location and the status of where it is. So go ahead. Did you?
On this one?
Okay, so this is the Mountain Bike Park, so named by some of the mountain bikers currently enjoying it, called Woven Wire. We could keep that or not. But, so what we're doing here, on the left, you'll see there's actually Clark's Run Creek Access. But the best way to show this is just to show you the video of people riding the trail.
Before we do that, there's a group that some of you may have seen called Creek, Clark's Run Environmental Education Group or Commission that's been around for years. Preston Miles, several people have worked hard in our community on that. And our group is the Danville Boyle County Trails Alliance. And it's called the Alliance because we've incorporated representatives from Creek and from the biking community, the running community.
I've got a whole slew of slides.
That brings everybody together, and they've been involved in designing this along Clark's Run.
Alex, would you play that for me?
I never made it, but I know how it takes. I'm motivated by a mix of emotion, got my statement. And I'm ready. This is in Danville now. This is just completed.
So do you want to know where that is? I bet you don't even know. You can access this from Enterprise Drive, where Amber Bev and The Still currently is. We do have a proper trailhead going in, a little bit more of a parking lot. But really, right now, what we're encouraging people to do, and we're going to get some signage up soon, is to go have dinner at The Still, and then go and talk to Commissioner Siri some about doing Wednesday night bike rides. So that will be, you can't see it all that well now. I think we'll look to sign it in the next few weeks. But the trail is in, and we're going to work towards promoting it and starting to do events. But as you can see, people can walk on it, too, and have access. We're going to have bikers go one way and hikers go another way.
The mountain bike trail at this time is two miles long, and it's got some hills in it. It's really beautiful. It's downtown Danville. It really takes us to a level where, in terms of a community, where a lot of people have thought we needed to be, because this will become a place where you can access Clark's Run and enjoy a hike, or a trail run, or a mountain bike ride. It should be. And then next year, we hope to expand it to another two miles, so it will be a four-mile double loop, and that'll be really popular.
Quick question. You'd mentioned accessing it from The Still, so parking would be up there. It's actually a little closer to Heritage Hospice. Is parking available there for that group or not?
Well, we're hoping that The Still would become an actual trailhead, designated trailhead, and they want that. We've met with them, and they've been very supportive. Heritage Hospice was very, is very supportive also. They gave us an easement to their section of this land.
I don't think it would be a problem, but we're going to be, we're going to try and be intentional about signing for parking so that there's no conflict with the people who operate business and the people using the park. So I don't think that they mind, but we're going to try and funnel people to one place.
You certainly have an invitation from The Still, and I just want people to know that that's probably the place that's really wanting to host it.
Briefly, this is a pump track. Earl, maybe you could probably do a better idea, or a better job of explaining what a pump track is, and where this is in Millennium Park. We do that.
It's in the northwestern corner of the park, behind the maintenance building. There's been a debris pile back there. You'll notice on the right that's exposed. Republic Works has been moving dirt in and out of there over the years. Dwayne at the county has done the same thing. The dirt pile goes almost all the way to the left, behind that little tree that's in the center of that. Some cyclists in town have suggested for a long time that, consistent with Millennium Park Master Plan, that we go ahead and grade that into an obstacle track for bicycles. So really, it's a minor, it's a, not an advanced, will not be an advanced track. It would be more for the 12-U age group, for kids. But it's rollers and obstacles for, that are entertaining and inviting for young kids on a small bicycle, a 24-inch bicycle, to play. And, you know, adults on a mountain bike could participate as well. But it's really focused on that 12, that 8- to 12-U bracket of kids with the bicycle. It's dirt mounds, dirt obstacles that are non-jumping based, but it's up and down, circle track type approach. And it's all right now in an area that is, like I said, a debris area for really dirt, waste dirt that we've developed over the years from miscellaneous projects in the park. And it's just using that dirt and grading it out in that location. It's out of the way, and it's accessible from the trail. And it's at the request of several different people. So it's low-hanging fruit and something, just an easy location to trial it and see if it catches legs, and folks are interested in it and want to ask for that to be developed further. It's a low cost and low-hanging fruit, so.
And then we'll put signs here at the pump track about the mountain bike park. So we'd like to think that they're connected, and it's just part of a big grand plan.
What is a pump track, though? What is the definition of?
Well, it's a methodology of riding a bicycle without pedaling. So the track, you use the mound, you use the gravity on the mounds to your advantage, and so it's a method of riding. So it's referenced as a pump track, but really, it's a circle track with obstacles on it that are rolling for kids to ride on, basically.
And practice for when you come to boulders and roots and bigger hills. I still don't think the mountain bike park is too advanced. You could feasibly practice as a kid at the pump track and then go and ride the mountain bike park.
Right. So the first section of mountain bike trail was intentionally left in a way for small kids. So, you know, again, age group five to 12 would enjoy that mountain bike track for years, you know, for several years.
All right, let's keep moving. We're taking up a lot of time. Okay, so this is a map, just to give you, and it's mostly accurate, this is a little old, but this map basically gives you an overall picture that shows you where we've started at the mountain bike park and that we're ending at the distillery. So this is actually quite a destination trail. The central, well, we'll get into what's done and what's not, but I wanted to give you just an overview. Did you want to mention something else about the mountain bike park?
Yeah, like Earl was saying about the pump track is using a part of the park that was underutilized. The mountain bike park is in the floodplain of Clark's Run, so it's not suitable for permanent construction, and we've been able to utilize it that way.
You know, I also should mention, too, that land was donated by Honeywell, the Boyle County Industrial Foundation, and Heritage Hospice. So, and the industrial foundation, quite a bit of land. So without the partnerships and those good folks trusting us, we wouldn't be here today. Okay, so keep this in mind. So this is, see where it says Hughes Lane and Corporate Drive? There is Hughes Lane and Corporate Drive. So do you want to explain where this goes to, Mark, you better at this part?
In a nutshell, this section is about a quarter of a mile. It will be a 10-foot paved trail.
No.
10-foot wide paved trail.
On the Corporate Drive entrance.
On the Corporate Drive entrance, and it'll connect Perryville Road to Lebanon Road, and in a safe way, down Hughes Lane and Corporate Drive. And that is something that we've needed for a long time in this community, so that people can get off the bypass with bicycles and get onto safer roads.
And also to mention here, this part is actually being paid for by KU. We've developed a relationship with them that started with the Water Plant Park. They invested in that, if you'll recall. So we've gone back, and they actually have a substation, is that what you call it here? So we scooped them up as partners, and they've been great to work with. So that's of no cost. And then, do you want to?
Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
In a nutshell, the thing, sometimes you get really lucky, and you have people like Rob Coewell and Honeybun and his family that have been members of this community for generations, and made it possible for there to be an industrial foundation in Danville. But when the industrial foundation was carved out of Coewell's farm, there was a green easement between the two. That's mostly Osage orange now, it's grown up. And Rob, who has worked and been a part owner at Central Seal for a long time, has used his own time, his own equipment, and their own land, his family, to create this Hughes Lane to Lebanon Road, kind of the Coewell Trail, which is going to be class I sand, not asphalt, but it'll be suitable for most bicycles, more of the broad tired or wide tired bikes than the thin road bikes. But it's going to be about a two-mile section, and it'll connect Lebanon Road to the Corporate Drive, that blue, that blue section.
That's what we're talking about, the blue there.
And that'll get, for, since about, well, for over 20 years, cyclists have been leaving downtown and going out Lebanon Road to get to Alum Springs and get to Forkland and Moorland and different junction, in different places. And this will give an option, we're trying to get options that'll stop the interface between cars and cyclists as much as possible until we can get out to. between cars and cyclists as much as possible until we can get out to safer rural roads. So, that's an effort that, that's going to be really beautiful.
We also have partnerships in there between Corporate Drive and the distillery, with the distillery, the UK Extension Office, BCTC, and the corporations in the industrial park have been great partners, too.
Yeah, a lot of the corporations are saying they're going, they want to connect on their own, they want to build a trail connecting it so their employees can walk before, after, during lunch, whatever.
They're really excited about it.
For health insurance reduction and that should help be a driver at the industrial park.
And this is another site that's in construction. So, if you head down Stanford Ave and you come to the Village Apartments or McClure Trailhead or McClure Apartments, this is, I don't know what that road is.
Stanford.
No, not Stanford that you would turn.
McClure Drive.
If you were pulling into McClure Village.
Is it David or Daniel? I get them confused.
Oh, to the left?
Yeah, David, yes.
David to the left.
Yes.
At any rate, sorry, I'm being confusing. This is where we're going to put a trailhead. This trailhead has actually been donated and paid for by the Allen Company and Caldwell Stone. So, again, we've done a good job of leveraging partnerships, too. So, this will be a 10-car, eight-car parking lot. We'll put a trailhead there like you see at DCA. And then, if you can see the hay barrels in the back, that's the, that's the end of the trail that you would see now that starts at Michael E. Smith and comes to Stanford Road. And right now, it just ends. Well, this is the trailhead where now you'll have proper parking and to the right is the construction of, to the East Main Lake.
One thing, the Kentucky hearing infirmed group owns that land where the Village Apartments are and they donated this easement to the city so we could put in an eight-car parking because there, people had, people wanted to use the existing trails along Clark's Run and there was nowhere to park. A gentleman has a small engine repair shop and we didn't want people parking there and that's happened. So, this should cure some of that problem and they have been great to work with.
But this is a mostly wooded trail, too, and this actually has some good elevation. But so essentially, you can go from the Michael E. Smith Park all the way to East Main and the Henson Pond on a separate shared-use trail with a trailhead in the middle. Briefly, the 2168 connector trail will also go to construction, I think this is summer or fall. That's a TAP grant that's gone through the Boyle County Fiscal Court. That will basically get us to the railroad. We won't make it all the way to Gentry Lane on this grant. We'll put in for a Phase Two that will get us then from the railroad over to Gentry to connect to Bluegrass.
The existing 2168 trail is about two miles. The part that will go to 127 will add another two miles and then it'll go up to Gentry Lane and then we're beginning to make a perimeter trail around Danville with connectors that makes commuting and bike use in our community safe and running in our community safe. So, it should take us to a different level in terms of who we are.
This is our latest map. It's not perfect. As soon as you print a map, you have to change it, we've learned. But I think this gives you a good idea of showing that we're really concerned with connecting assets that already exist, whether it be a distillery or a park, where we're trying to use resources that are already in place and leverage partnerships where they can be leveraged. So, we're really trying to take into account bike lanes, parks, shared-use path, whatever the situation in the environment calls for, we try to be agile enough to do.
And we definitely need to thank each of you. We need to thank Manager Scott and Attorney Dexter and Earl as engineer because you all have been supportive. We appreciate that. You've been willing to hold the easements. Stephen has prepared the easements and recorded them. Jennifer and I have gone out and tried to negotiate these easements with a great deal of success because we live in a community where people are supportive without spending tax dollars to get these easements. People have been supportive of this effort. So, thank you all very much.
But we're not done. We'll be back to ask, like, next budget session. I could put the map back up to show you. Do y'all have any questions? We're going to do the best we can to get this information out. There's one huge outstanding piece and that's the signage. And we've been working on a trail signage system. We'll get there. But a lot of this is done in pieces and it just takes a long time. The Henson Trail, I started working on in 2012. So, well, we all started working on it in 2012. So, if people have questions about where to go, refer them to me. We're working on getting a website up, but it's still all just coming together, so have patience with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
You two should be very happy. You've seen the fruits of your labor starting to come along.
I won't lie, it's been fun watching that mountain bike park video.
Yeah, and I'm part of the Trails Alliance and they were very correct in thanking the staff over here. They've been very helpful all along the way, as has the county on the 2168 connector. So, I think this is good news for our new Parks and Rec Director that we have this kind of an active community.
Yeah, we're excited to work together.
Well, thank you all.
Well, thank you guys for your work and excellent report.
And if I may, after that wonderful report, I would ask probably those involved with the Trail Alliance to watch carefully with a special lens over the coming weeks as we attempt to resolve some agreements regarding Parks and Recreation in this community and in the rollout of potential options to resolve the situation. Pay careful note how trails are treated. They're truly an asset, as you've noted, and the commission and the court have both marked them as community assets. I would encourage you in the rollout of the options to take a position on what is best for trails, not only their maintenance, but future capital expense in, both now and in the future, because it's a critical element in what is a very complex diagram of assets. You're going to have one option that considers them a joint asset of the city and county, which will have shared costs and maintenance. You will have another option that focuses mostly on Millennium Park and the assets that are there, which would in turn leave trails entirely in the purview of maintenance and construction by the city. So, that's going to be an important lens to look at these potential rollout of ideas on who is going to maintain, protect and ensure the continuation of these trails in this community now and for generations. And it's going to hinge upon a discussion that's going to take place, you know, within the next short amount of time. And those plans, as promised, will be rolled out here at the beginning of June.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dexter. That's a reminder for all of us. Appreciate that. Item number eight is Resolution 2019-05-28-01, CLG Grant Award Acceptance. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I'm just here to answer any questions, but basically, this was the grant that we applied for previously that Joni presented to you, where we were asking for the money and we're just coming back to ask you to accept the grant. We were awarded that and so we just need to accept that money and then we'll get started as soon as all the paperwork's signed on getting that planned. And we hope that all of you will be able to come and go with us on that trip.
Sounds good. Well, I move for approval of Resolution 2019-02-2501.
Second, one second.
Asking for it, second.
Asking for a second, yes. All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
The number here is different than the number on the agenda. Is this the one we should go by on the actual resolution?
It should be 05. It should be 05.
So, so to clarify, that resolution's 2019-05-2501? Okay.
05-28-01.
Whatever today is.
Whatever today is. This says 22501.
Yep.
It's 52801.
There you go.
Here, no further discussion. Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next is Resolution 2019-05-28-02, Trust Agreement.
Yes, sir. Mayor Pro Tem, this is the trust participation agreement that is required by the Kentucky League of Cities. General Insurance Trust, under state law, cities are permitted to group together to provide insurance coverage for the members. This trust participation agreement sets out the rights, duties, obligations and authorities of both the trust as a whole and each individual member. It's been one that is, it's required under the state laws and constitution that cities execute annually. That has been in operation since 1987 and I think for the most part, or almost entirely non-changing, it's a fairly routine thing that we sign every year as required, as a prerequisite, if you will, for the election later to participate in the purchase or of the insurance provided under the KLC trust. We don't have that pricing yet, but we do have this trust participation agreement, which is the first step towards that.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of Resolution Number 2019-05-28-02. Is that the right one?
Yes. Second.
Probably move in second. There are no further questions. Let's call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 2019-05-28-03, Workers' Compensation Trust Agreement.
Yes, sir. This is a similar document. The KLC has provided workers' compensation since 1978. Again, under state law, the cities are allowed to have a group count to do so, either under self-insured or any fully insured product that might be made available to members. This is a trust participation agreement as a prerequisite or prerequisite to later purchasing insurance from the KLC if we should wish to renew our coverage with them. We don't have that pricing yet, but again, this is recommended as the first step towards consideration of that ultimate pricing.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
I move to accept Resolution Number 2019-05-28-03.
Second.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carries. Thank you. Item number 11 and 12, Proposed Budget Presentation and City Manager Report. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Thank you. With regard to the submission of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2019-20, that is in your packet along with the cover letter. We reviewed a couple of weeks ago, I think, the preliminary budget, or maybe longer than two weeks ago. This document is very similar to what we reviewed in detail. I want to go through the transmittal letter briefly and point out the many good things that the City of Danville is able to do in the year ahead and that is contained in this The letter recites, of course, the statutory requirement that the manager present the proposed budget, the city commission consider and adopt a budget prior to, 30 days prior to the expiration of the current fiscal year, I'm sorry, prior to the expiration, not 30 days prior to, but prior to June 30th, 2019. This cover letter recites the benefits of the budget for the commission, for the department heads, for the public. It allows us to understand in greater detail what services are to be provided to our citizens for the next fiscal year, the next 12 months, beginning July 1. This year, I've went to the additional step of preparing notes to the proposed budget that are in this packet and will also be placed on the website tomorrow so that citizens will have an opportunity to more easily read the budget and the significant features contained in the budget. So, a brief, and I'll stress the word, brief summary of the budget for all funds. I think it's no secret to any of us that as one of our commissioners who shall go unnamed says we've got a pretty good deal here in Danville for the value paid and we do have a high quality of life in Danville. Our services include in part, you know, our public protection services, our police, fire, E911, medical dispatch service, code enforcement, our general governance in terms of enactment of ordinances to serve and protect our residents. We have life support services, water sewer, services to enhance our quality of life. We had a presentation today about our Trails Alliance and what the city and the county and with private sector support are doing to provide those recreational opportunities. We support arts, Parks and Recreation. We pave sidewalks. We do a variety of community and economic development services. We support funding for planning and zoning, our airport, our economic development partnership and a variety of other community agencies that contribute to our quality of life here in Danville. And so, the great news is that we have a balanced budget before us that proposed to continue essentially all existing services, or I would say all services, not essentially, for the next fiscal year without the requirement of the city commission to raise taxes to do so. We have a very active work program planned for next year as proposed in this budget and some of that is the continuation and hopeful completion of projects that have been in the pipeline for a while, but we hope to actually complete in the next fiscal years. So, our highlights, if you will, of our services for our residents and customers include the following. We plan to and recommend to hire one additional police officer that will allow provision of improved school resource officer service to our schools, one additional E911 telecommunicator to meet our current workload requirements. We have both medical dispatch and regular E911 calls. We need an additional staff person to deal effectively with that workload. For a number of years, we have operated on a part-time janitorial system and given the scope of activities or buildings now to be kept clean and those include our parking garage, city hall, our new water treatment facility. We believe it is time to hire one janitor that can help in all of those facilities to keep it clean. We are also proposing to add two finance clerks about halfway through the fiscal year that will allow us to support the finance department's many activities, which include all the regional water collection payments that are made to do a better job of reviewing and collecting, reviewing, not collecting, but reviewing the payment for and making sure that we are collecting all of our municipal insurance premium taxes and other revenues. And it's an effort really to make sure that we're doing the very best we can with our current tax structure before considering any possibility of further modifying those taxes. So, those are the limited staff that are proposed for the next fiscal year. Police officer, again, a 911 communicator, a janitor and two finance clerks that would transition in late December, early January. The second point that I'll make is that this budget includes the provision of a cost-of-a-living adjustment of 2% for all full-time and part-time city employees, again, accepting the city manager whose adjustments are made after the termination of the city commission in terms of performance review, with that next being scheduled to be held in December of this year. This budget allows us to continue to fully fund our pension obligations, which have been stepped up considerably last year as well as this year. A 12% cap on rate doesn't cap the contributions at 12% as we learn and so we're significantly funding the step-up required by the state pension systems in our budget. It's required by law and we are doing that and again, with no additional revenue changes. We're making in the next fiscal year a significant additional capital construction improvements to our water storage tank in Perryville and water distribution systems. improvements to our water storage tank in Perryville and water distribution systems, both at the Corporate Drive and Perryville, which total $4.8 million. We will begin this next year upgrading our sewer plant at an anticipated cost of $1.5 million, or an estimated total improvement cost of $4.5 million, that will, the balance of which will be not the next, not this coming fiscal year, but the second fiscal year out. We're also improving collection lines and pumps at nearly $1,975,000, that's the projected cost. And we're reviewing other sewer service adequacy, infrastructure needs. We're funding, as we well know, our final design and will soon be awarding contract and later this year begin construction of our new seven-and-a-half-million-dollar central fire station, and we're very excited in the community about that improvement in service, which as our chief, our chief has said, should be more than 20 years without any additional expenditure required, and hopefully last a lifetime of 50 years. We continue to make improvements to our streets, roads, and sidewalks, and we, in this budget, in recognition of the bottleneck and safety issues that exist around Kroger and Starbucks and that area in the vicinity, propose to construct a linkage, a new linkage road that would connect Fox Harbor Drive and Belinda Boulevard to relieve that congestion on Skywatch Drive and Deadmark Drive out in front of those major retail establishments. We've provided in this budget increased funding for economic development activities. We've funded more effort through the EDP at $100,000, and we've also allocated for Bluegrass Community Technical College, a grant of $78,000 to allow them to be successful in getting the state grant that would allow them to expand their facility to enhance their training, classroom size, and provision of technical training. We've continued funding, even at a somewhat lower level, for a variety of other community nonprofits in our community. They add to the quality of life, and those are continued in this recommended budget. We plan to update the cemetery master plan and make further improvement in our city cemeteries. I believe it was this past year, we acquired the lot on First Street going into Bellevue. We've not had our cemetery master plan reviewed for 15, between 15 and 20 years, so it's a time to update that at modest cost and see what we need to do to take it to the next level of providing service. We find it necessary, and as a matter of policy, we continue to supplement from our general fund resources the operations of key programs that do not financially break even. Those include our parking structure and system, our garbage and recycling, our museum and the community art center, and our cemetery operations. We plan for the future needs of our city in both the general fund and utility fund, and this takes a variety of maybe studies that we've done in the past and plan to do in the future. Most notably would be the funding of a downtown master plan for the City of Danville in the year ahead in order to be prepared for and assist with economic development in our community. So, these are the highlights of programs. I can't minimize, really, the fact that the provision of continued services with essentially no staff changes other than those very limited ones I've mentioned is a large accomplishment in the face of rising cost on everything. So, we're trying to be frugal in terms of the provision of services, but we are continuing all of those services. So, this budget, again, was, it sort of started in December with our commission retreat in terms of the priorities and the aspirations the city commission had. We had working discussions with our management team. We had your input into the preliminary budget and afterwards, and so, this is the recommended budget for the next fiscal year. And I've mentioned a lot of the capital improvements that are included in here. The sum of those are $18,245,000, and that's a significant future-oriented investment for our community. It's indicative also that Danville is unlike sort of other communities of 16,000 or 17,000, where a regional draw and a regional provider of services. I mean, our college, our fine art center, things that we do, bring our historic downtown and historic city, bring people in, and we also provide services well beyond the boundaries of our city. So, we have costs associated with that, of course, but they're based upon who pays what, all of those water sewer costs. We have independent studies that balance the need for revenue with the equity issues of who pays what, and so, we will be having, I think, in the next year, it's hard to believe after the construction of the water treatment plant so recently, but it's time, again, to look at the equity of water customers from commercial to residential to make sure that we are appropriate in those charges. Final statement, it's not necessary to raise taxes as we consider this budget, and I consider that a accomplishment that really results from the commission's prioritization of our efforts, from our department heads in terms of tightening the belt and looking what could be done and needs to be done, as well as the rather labor-intensive efforts of our chief financial officer, Michelle Gossar, in putting that all together in a coherent way. So, this is the budget. It meets all the legal requirements. It's respectfully presented for your consideration. Our usual timeline, as you know, as well as I, or maybe better than I, is that it's presented, we take it up at the first meeting in June for comments, any changes, and if there are none, we give it first reading and give it the second reading at the second meeting in June ahead of the June 30th deadline. So, that's an overview. I will mention very briefly that, and I won't go through this unless the commission really wishes to go through this in detail again, but again, it will be on the website tomorrow, the explanatory notes regarding the proposed budget by each department, each section, which is a new feature this year, as well as our budget, and I would say, I think we put out in greater detail our budget than virtually any other government that I'm aware of on our website, so anyone can review that and ask questions. And the third item that I will mention again, and no action is required tonight on that as well, but you will recall, having served on the commission now for three terms, oh, I'm sorry, the capital, budget, ten-year capital forecast is also included in here, as well as at the very last of the tab, a funding agreement. The funding agreement is a document that we've used now for seven or eight years at least, maybe longer, that sets forth the requirements and obligations of any agency that receives funding from the City of Danville. We do this in order to make clear that these are public funds that need to be expended in a manner consistent with public law, and those relevant statutes are kind of paraphrased here in terms of being subject to open meetings, subject to open records, and also subject to public procurement policies of the City of Danville as the funding agency here. And sometimes, in our changes of board composition, people have a different understanding of what may be required, and we've gone for many years here in roundabout discussions with one group or another about what's required and why. And so, this effort has been sharpened a little bit here in this funding agreement to make it explicitly clear, just like the lights are.
It's dismissal time, right?
Of what is expected of any agency that receives $25,000 or more in funding from the city. Now, the only change in this really from prior years is the requirement that any agency receiving $25,000 or more will transmit to the city in the effort of good communication their QuickBooks journal of receipts and expenditures, so that we have this conversation on an ongoing basis rather than quarterly or once a year or twice a year. Other agencies are doing this currently. The EDP, for example, has these journals readily available at all of our meetings where we go over our finances. The only requirement is that for those agencies receiving $25,000 or more, they do transmit that monthly electronically, so if we've got a question, we raise it, and it's a condition of receiving continued funding, and it simply is good communication, good communication effort in my mind. And again, it's consistent with the open records requirements of anyone receiving $25,000 or more, all records are open of a financial nature.
And I would add to that, too, Mr. Scott, that it's an essential oversight to maintaining the integrity of public finance dollars. If you accept public money, there comes a heightened responsibility to secure that it's used for the public good, which means there is heightened disclosure rules, and it's all done not to be quote-unquote "big brother," but to ensure that the dollars are spent in a way that is defensible and within the public purpose laws that are governed and go along with the expenditure of public funds, which these are, tax dollars.
Any questions, Mr. Scott? Dexter, any questions?
Question, not particularly about that necessarily, but before we can finalize anything, we have to decide what our agreement with the county is going to be park-wise, correct? Is that...
Well, I'm not sure.
Or will that be going forward?
Ideally, this issue would have been resolved in March to allow proper budget planning to have transpired before today. However, depending upon how the issue is resolved in the coming days or weeks, it could be anticipated that a budget amendment would be needed or not, depending on the outcome of that scenario. For instance, should the county elect the option to participate in a city and county-wide park system, then it would probably be unnecessary to have the budget changed to any degree. However, in the event that the county elects to participate in the funding of Millennium Park only, you should anticipate a budget amendment, because the city will likely have to provide resources necessary to administer, govern, and maintain parks that are critical as an asset of the city that fall outside of Millennium Park, including trails. So, in a nutshell, as the budget has been prepared in the mindset and the hope of a continued collaboration to the highest degree.
Okay.
In the event that that does not transpire, you should anticipate a budget amendment.
Or maybe a shifting of money. I think that I'm very proud of what you folks did. We have a lot of money set aside for Parks and Rec, over half of it going directly to Parks and Rec, and the other half set aside for city parks, as is now, so there may just may be some shifting, but I'm proud of what you all did, and I think it was a great question you brought up, and I hope the county is listening to that, too, and want to get on board and work with us, because it just means more money for trails and the whole park system in general.
Because ideally, in that conversation, the city would prefer to keep an integrated system so as to allow the dollars to be commingled where the use of a particular park is not contingent upon your place of residency in the county. However, if the city has shifted with a burden of placing the lion's share of cost or the sole cost of share for all parks outside of Millennium Park, there are some critical decisions that will fall from that that I know you would prefer not to make, and I don't think residents in the community would like to be made either.
Yeah. Other comments or questions? We, I was going to ask for an update when we got the commissioner comments about the park and rec proposals. I'll still wait till we get the commissioner comments to ask that. Still, take questions about the proposed budget. Any other questions or comments?
I've had a discussion with Mr. Scott about possibly looking at the policies for our nonprofit agencies, looking ahead into next year, looking at the policies, possibly changing those in the future.
I'm good with that. I think that goes along with the comment from Citizen Brown last meeting about the 2% raise, but we are going to go into a study, so next year it may look a little different in how you might do raises based on the position you have instead of just across the board. So, I think, looking into the next budget year, we'll take a look at some different things. I feel so anyway.
Anyone else? If not, thank you, Mr. Scott, and thank you, Mr. Dexter. The next item, item 12, city manager report. Mr. Scott?
I really have nothing further to add at this time. I thought I might have some report to give, but actually, I don't, other than what's said tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you. Forward at the second here, the public, and this is the time in the agenda when folks can come forward and talk about things that are out on the agenda for tonight. So, thanks for your patience.
Am I the only one?
You're first.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. Very briefly, this concerns parking on Third Street, South Third Street, between the Walnut Street and Main Street on the left-hand side of the street.
Could you identify yourself?
And I parked, I'm sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Herschel McKinley.
Okay.
But anyway, I got a ticket for parking outside the box. Then I started researching it, because I had backed up to the two cars that were there, giving one, the car behind me, a little room to get out, and I ran inside the building for brass band business, came out 20 minutes later, noticed I had a ticket for parking outside the box, but the two cars behind me were apparently outside the box, too, which forced me forward. I did go to the hearing board. They didn't take my argument, so I still paid my $30 fine. But here, and I didn't realize it's $30 fine, by the way, I've got a couple of photographs that will show you something. If you want to pass these around, sir. If you will notice that those lines that go from the street that mark off the box on Third Street do not go all the way to the sidewalk, so the driver of the vehicle has zero reference as to where they are, because they can't see the lines. As far as I'm concerned, that portion of Third Street is an orphaned street, where left-hand parking on a one-way street is the norm and has been for some time. However, I've also looked at, a friend of mine went out and measured some parking spaces. Your parking spaces in town can vary up to five feet. On the seven or eight that we measured, one was 23, and I think the smallest was 17.9, and I think there are others that are even smaller than that. So, if your vehicle is 20 foot long, like a standard pickup truck, an F-150 Ford pickup truck is 20.4 feet long, if you pull into there, you're going to be hanging over, or if your four wheels are inside the box, that may be okay, but you've got your hind end or your front end sticking out, you're going to cause somebody else a problem there. So, if there is a, and I don't know where, and none of these smaller spaces are actually marked, so it'd be nice to know that. Also, I looked in your Danville code. It stipulates on page 864, 1731, Article 2, Parking, Stopping, Standing, 1731, and reads in part, it shall not... in part, "It shall not park in any manner other than with its right-hand side parallel with the curb except where parking angle is in effect. No vehicle shall be parked or standing on any street unless it is, its two right wheels are within 12 inches of a parallel and parallel of the curb." So basically, I think what you're seeing on this is something that just hasn't been visited by the city commissioner, the codes department, needs to be taken care of because basically parking on the left-hand side of Third Street by the code now appears to be, to me, to be illegal, and that the city is somewhat culpable in any offenses that occur there. "It shall be unlawful to park any vehicle in such a way that the vehicle should not be entirely in the limits of the space so designated." During the hearing, I was, it was mentioned that they try to allow people to, if their tires are inside the box, then that's okay, but if you've got a short box and you're overhanging, you're going to push somebody else back, and you're going to place them into a situation to where they're going to end up possibly with a $30 fine, which is unfair. A friend of mine, I just found out, 86 or 88-year-old pastor's retired pastor's wife pulled in behind a truck on Main Street, large truck. Truck pulled out, she was in shopping, came out, she had a $30 ticket under with no fault of her own. So if you're going to have boxes, then it's up to you to decide where they should be, and the parking people should understand where they should be, and if you're going to have these, I would delineate that on your signs, oh, by the way, the sign, the little sign that says "Park and stalls only" on Third Street, the first one at Walnut Street is about this high, and you can, it's covered by a vehicle, so nobody sees it, and if you pull in those three or four spots, the next signs are all blocked by the telephone poles, and so they're not visible. On Main Street, between Second and Fourth Street, there are no signs of parking, you've got to park in the stall, there's no signs, parking only in the stall. Stall, by the way, is for a horse, parking space is for a car.
We're over the three minutes mark.
That is, that's what I wanted to bring before the commission, hoping that they will consider this and consider the situation, because if a person stops in downtown Danville, they're going out shopping, they're supporting our local businesses, and through no fault of their own, they end up with a $30 fine.
Not good.
Not good at all, and especially with the visitors and the people that we have coming in to the city of Danville, because it is an extremely good city to visit, and this next weekend or two are going to be just outstanding and phenomenal. I suggest you all come to the Great American Brass Band Festival and have a ball. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
There's any questions you can ask me now?
No, sir, we don't. We don't do that. We just listen and send it to the proper person. Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay, see none? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number 13, Payment of the Bills.
Commissioner comments?
Did I skip Commissioner comments? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we just, oh, Commissioner comments.
Thought you had one.
No.
I do Commissioner shout-outs to start things, and maybe that'll be the end of it, but the first Main Street Live that the Heart of Danville sponsored, in my opinion, was a great success, a lot of good feedback from people that attended it, so I think we're off to a good start on that. The Veterans Memorial Service that was put together by former magistrate Jack Hendricks was a very nice thing, and our mayor, and I'm glad he's not here because he gloat, did a really good job on his speech.
He's a gloat.
And then finally, per the shirt I'm wearing, and it's already been mentioned, Brass Band is right around the corner, so.
Someone else?
Well, I had written down Parks and Rec proposals just to ask our city attorney if there was any updates that could be shared with us.
At our meeting, we projected there'd be a June 1st rollout of those plans, and we're on track. I don't even know what day of the week that falls, but we will be on track to having those plans completed by the beginning of June, and how those are first discussed, I will leave to the city manager, but they are in preparation and will be ready for viewing by that time.
So along with that, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Yeah. So June 1st will be Saturday, and I think the idea was to try to get those to the commissioners and the magistrates, Judge Exac, Mayor, of course, for review and then take them to their bodies, so it would seem that we will have almost two weeks to look at those prior to our next meeting.
Yeah. Other Commissioner comments? Oh, a shout-out to the police department. I attended in a stand-in for the mayor for their memorial service and was done with, in a very dignified, first-class way, and they were supported by the fire department, which I thought was very commendable, and a shout-out Chief Gray. Chief Gray handled it very professionally, but more than his professional handling of it was his professional comments, his salute to the fallen officers, which was really uplifting to know that, that about those two officers. Okay? Anyone else? If not, then let's go to item 13, Payment of the Bills.
I would move that we pay the bills in the amount of $105,376.56 as presented.
Second.
And probably move in second. Any questions or comments? See none? I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Item 14 is the first reading of Ordinance 1929, the 707 Shakertown Road Zone Change. First reading. Madam Clerk, you want to read that for us?
This is the first reading of Ordinance 1929, an ordinance changing the zone from GRA, General Residential Large Lot, and AR1 Agriculture Residential, to Neighborhood Conservation Classification, NCC, for approximately 4.190 acres, more or less, of real property located at 707 Old Shakertown Road in the city of Danville.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, a motion?
I move to accept the first reading of Ordinance Number 1929.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I will be abstaining from this vote due to a professional relationship with the same developers regarding a different piece of property that could be used for future development.
I wonder why you were stared at me? I forgot about that.
That's why I couldn't second.
Throw call vote? Is required, throw call vote?
Mayor Pro Tim Atkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Terry.
I'm abstaining.
Commissioner Cottle.
Yes.
Commissioner Saris.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
I hate to do this, but you're going to force me, aren't you? I've been informed there is a need for an executive session. Property acquisition?
Property acquisition and personnel.
All right. Chair is very hesitant about accepting a motion to go into executive session.
Well, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to KRS 61810-1F, and also regarding potential real property acquisition for which publicity at the present stage might or would be likely to affect the value per KRS 61810-1B.
Second.
Why don't you abstain?
I was going to read it, but he jumped in front of me.
Probably move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Pro Tim, I would like to move that we return to regular session.
Second.
With your permission, of course.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're back in regular session. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerks?
Staff would ask that you, we hire back Daylon Morris as a police officer with the city of Danville, to the city of Danville with the usual probationary measures, and he's a certified officer. So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Probably move in second. Any comments or questions?
He's a former bait bulldog.
Former bait bulldog, Danville Admiral, right? I bet Chief Gray coached him, too, right?
It's proud for us up here and for human resources that this was a former employee that thought the grass was greener and is coming back to us, so we feel good about that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else?
I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.